All right, let's get started. Call order, the Gladstone Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. We're at 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon, 97027. The meetings are recorded and are online. Just Google it. Gladstone Planning Commission meetings. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith? Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Wenz? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne. There is no one in the audience, so we don't need any cards filled out.
[laughing]
And I'm a little disappointed because, you know, the meetings that we had with this code audit, I was begging people to just show up to the city council meetings or the planning commission meetings just because, and then if something bad happens, this room will be packed with people that are really mad at us.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, and I said that too. I said, "People get really angry when the cement truck pulls up, but you can't get them to come to the meetings before that."
Yeah.
And then it's too late. But anyway, so tonight, we're, um, the agenda is we'll do the consent agenda first, which is minutes and stuff from our last meeting. And then I was going to say public comments, but there's no public. And then we'll go to our regular agenda, which includes the planning report and public hearing file Z-0161-19D, which is for Dick Hanna Nissan. And then we'll, after that's done, then we'll discuss possible changes to the extension of compliance, or extension compliance time limits in the municipal code. And then I was going to open up public comments, but no one's here. We'll do business from the commission.
No one's here.
Well, he's from Dick Hanna. And we're going to give him plenty of time to talk. And then we'll adjourn. So, let's go to the consent agenda. And did anybody see anything? Do we have any additional correspondence or any new material?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
None opposed, the agenda is adopted. We'll start the regular agenda with a monthly planning report from our planner.
Okay. Hello, I'm Lizeth Dance, standing in for Melissa, who's unavailable to attend this evening. I'm going to be presenting the staff recommendation of agenda item number three and then also the monthly report. I'll do my best to address any questions regarding these issues. If there are questions I cannot answer, myself and Melissa will be able to do additional research and get back to you later on this week or probably tomorrow. And then if you look at kind of what we have for the report of April, you can see there was a slight uptick in administrative decisions. And we think that's probably going to be a trend that's going to continue on. We had three administrative decisions this month. Two of them were for sign permits and one of them was a property line adjustment. The adjustment was to align a property line with a fence line. And then we've been doing administrative decisions for signs because the code requires it, but we hadn't been doing that historically, so we're now doing those administrative decisions for signs. The customer contacts and phone contacts have been kind of standard for what we've been doing on a monthly basis. We issued one building permit and we had one pre-application conference. The pre-application conference was for the 18,000 Webster Road housing facility proposed by Clackamas County. And then kind of, and just kind of open projects that are being worked on. One of them is the 19505 McLaughlin Design Review will be presenting as agenda item number three. Cars Planet is still uncomplete. There's been incomplete. There's been no action on that application. And then the Webster Ridge Road has been inactive as well, so there hasn't been anything happening with that project either. That concludes the monthly report. I'm available for questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
At the meeting on the code audit, somebody asked, I think the public asked a question about plant, the pre-conference.
Okay.
If it was required. I said, "I know we do them, but I didn't know if it was required." As far as I know, it's not.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So, my understanding is that Jim Southgate is kind of managing all the notice and kind of pre-agenda things for that, not the planning staff. And so, everything is being done through the consultant. And so, if it was done, he likely would have done it. I don't think, the only thing that I know was a little late was the notice that was sent out, was sent out a little bit later than proposed.
Are you talking about conferences with the public or with the ...?
I'm talking about just a regular, like, say if I wanted to build an apartment building or Dick Hanna wants to do a remodel.
Pre-application conference.
Do they have to have a pre-application conference or is that optional?
For the code audit?
No, just for any project.
Preapplications are required, uh, pre-application meetings are required for any type-three land use review.
Okay.
So, any larger things that are coming here do require the pre-application.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to very clear.
Yeah, sorry.
And you can have one, obviously request one, even if you're building a home. I mean, you know, this is, I've done it before.
Yeah, it's kind of a way.
Depends on the situation, but, but yeah, it's.
You can have one just to see, they're not really, they're kind of all, they're inquiry-based. They're required for larger projects just to see feasibility and get everybody in a room. But if somebody just has a question about how feasible a project might be and wants to talk to more than planning staff, because there's usually more people at play with bigger developments.
And just to clarify it for the record, we are talking about the, the staff-based ones, not the ones where the community are asking questions?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah, it's a pre-application conference. So, for example, in Oregon City, I was looking at buying a property in Oregon City and I wanted to do an Airbnb thing at the time. And in order to do that, I had to get a variance to do that. But I had to have a pre-application conference.
It was mandatory for this one property.
It was $5,000.
Yeah, ours are not that expensive.
Oh.
[laughing]
And it was required that I do that if I wanted to. Anyway, so that was a question the public had last night. Thank you.
Yeah, depending on the scope of project, they're required for the larger projects. Anything that would be a type-three that you'll be seeing, the administrative decisions, they're not required.
Okay. All right, are we ready to start a public hearing?
Do we have, are we approving the monthly planning report? Do we have a motion in a second?
Oh, good, thank you.
Sorry.
Does someone want to make a motion that we approve the monthly planning report?
I make a motion to approve the monthly planning report.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None opposed, motion passes. The planning report is approved. We ready for this public hearing?
Yep.
So, I'm opening the public hearing for file Z-0161-19D. Request for enclosure of existing 1,239 square foot service drive, bid at Dick Hanna Nissan, 19505 McLaughlin Boulevard, to accommodate five employees and customer service areas. No landscaping or parking modifications are proposed. Scott Allinger, applicant, Jason Hanna, J.J.H.O., LLC owner. I have to read this thing about the public hearing. It's pretty boring and monotonous, so bear with me. I read the file number. The staff, the order of this will go, the staff will present the report. Questions will by the hearing body or staff from us. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited as follows, which I'm opening the public hearing now, so we don't have to reopen it again. Applicants, persons in favor, persons opposed, rebuttal. Then we'll close the public hearing. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, discussion, deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission to close the hearing or the matter may be continued to a date and time certain. Any party may request a continuous of this hearing or may request the record remain open for seven days. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone. When you come forward, please state your name and address, or at least your name for the record, for notifications and so forth. In making a decision, the commission must consider whether the applicant meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, if you fail to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the commission, the applicant and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that. Issue the city council or land use board of appeals unless the commission is making a recommendation, city council. In this case, we're not making a recommendation. The commission's board will be, the commission's decision will be the final decision in this matter unless it's appealed to city council. So, we're making the decision tonight and that will be final unless it's appealed. An appeal must be filed within 15 days in accordance with chapter 17 dot 92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Failure by the applicant to raise conditional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I'd like to ask commission members if, to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, have commission members visited the site. We'll just start down at the end and just work our way down to the other end.
I have not visited the site, no. Nor do I have.
I have not visited the site. And prior to the meeting tonight, I was talking with Pat. I had some problems reading my packet and I was clarifying with him if he had the same problem regarding the last half of the, what we were given.
Okay. And I did not visit the site specifically for this application, but I'm familiar with the site and so forth.
Yeah, I did visit the site and I haven't had any contacts.
I did visit the site and had a general conversation with Commissioner Malachi prior to the meeting on general information that was in the book.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission members' ability to participate? Hearing none. Staff will now present the staff report.
Hello. Okay, so we're looking at the May 19th Planning Commission meeting. We're looking at design review application number Z-0161-19. The existing Dick Hanna Nissan car dealership was originally approved in 1985 through a city designer view land use approval. The applicants are now proposing to enclose an existing service drive. The proposed project will add approximately 1,239 square feet of interior space, not expanding the footprint of the main building. The enclosed area will accommodate for five existing employees. There will be five service desks used to check in customers who are arriving for service. The proposed addition will provide a heated and cooled space for both employees and customers, making their entire service process protected from weather conditions. The subject's general commercial zone property is approximately .93 acres in size. It is part of the McLaughlin Commercial Corridor. There are adjacent tax lots in common ownership that are part of the subject dealership, creating a total site area of 2.01 acres. General commercial zoning allows for car dealerships as an outright permitted use. The existing auto dealership on the subject property is comprised of one main building along with a parking display area. No overlays are present on the property. You can see you've got McLaughlin Boulevard and then Gloucester. And then on the other side is a river, so Gloucester is kind of running. And then if you look at this slide, the entrance in the area that's going to get enclosed is kind of at the back of the building off of McLaughlin, right off of Gloucester, the entrance right there. And there'll be more slides to kind of define that a little more clearly. Public notice. The proposed project was noticed according to zoning title requirements for design review and no formal comments have been received.
Is that still true?
Here's the image of the existing site as it is right now. You can kind of see you're looking into like an open car bay. That area is the area that's going to be enclosed and I believe kind of expanded out a little bit just for a wall area. The proposed project is consistent with all of the applicable building, siting, and design criteria, as well as parking, landscaping, and circulation code requirements. Specifically, current landscaping and parking areas meet requirements of Title 17 of the city's municipal code and the previous 1985 designer view, D.R. 85-5, approved for the development of the site. No modifications to the existing landscaping, site circulation, or drainage are proposed. While slight modifications to the existing ADA parking spots are proposed, they would be limited to improvements to ADA access without change, without any change in the number of spaces. There is currently three ADA spaces on the property. The proposed addition incorporates storefront and ground floor windows, as well as other design features as stipulated by general siting and design standards of chapter 1744 of the city's municipal code as addressed in the staff recommendation. And here you can kind of see that area that'll be enclosed. This is looking at it from the north elevation and the west elevation. Staff is recommending approval of proposed projects with nine special conditions, including submittal of a final lighting plan, fire department, and public works approval, and evidence of bicycle parking on the site. The applicant's representative, T.J. Boatwright, is here and has reviewed the staff report and has expressed no concerns regarding the staff recommendation. The applicant and I are here and happy to address any questions regarding this project. This concludes staff's presentation.
So, first thing, I'd like to make a comment to Tammy. We used to get staff responses on projects and it seems that they've been falling behind on that.
Mm-hmm.
Can we try to follow up and see why that's not happening anymore?
They are sending the information, so I can certainly follow up on that, yes.
Yeah, even if, even if all they're saying is they have no concerns, that'd be fine. But we definitely want to know that they at least looked at things.
So, who specifically?
Whoever has been requested for comments, we'd like to know that they've at least looked at them.
So, like the fire department, police department?
And we went through this before and they started doing it, but all of a sudden that they're not doing it anymore, so.
All right. Anything else before the applicant? The applicant may now present testimony and arguments. Do you have anything to present? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? No. Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Does anyone want to provide neutral testimony? Does the applicant wish to provide rebuttal testimony? Does the staff have anything they wish to add or recap?
Nothing, no.
Okay, this is where, this next one where I want to find out more about what you guys were discussing. Does any member of the commission have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point? And then we're not going to close the public hearing right now?
So, you said you want to know what I saw. I was talking about this. So, if you look, like, this text is not really readable. So, it was a little difficult to follow the plans that were in our packet because none of the text is readable in any of this. That was what I was asking Steve whether it was just my book or whether he was having the same problem.
So, do you have concerns that there's something there that?
No, it's just, I was trying to do my due diligence and half the packet wasn't readable.
So, is, do you see that?
No, what were we talking about?
I think you were pointing out the.
Page 314 through 322.
Okay.
I don't have any concerns in terms of what's being proposed to us, but.
Okay.
It was a little hard for me to evaluate properly since I couldn't actually look at the plans.
314.
Through about 22. It's not all bad.
Oh, it's just hard to read.
A lot of it's like blurry or not there or.
I have full-size plans if you want to look at them.
I think I'm okay right now with what you showed up there. It's a little easier to see, but we need to keep a better eye on that down the road.
Yeah, we get digital plans and I think just in sizing and getting them down to the printable size. I think sometimes you lose the quality a little bit. I'll make a note of that. We can maybe fix the resolution before the final decision goes out.
I think a lot of times we end up getting them printed larger and folded over in the packet.
If there are no further questions, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing and then the planning commission will discuss and.
Bring out the motion. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None opposed, public hearings closed. Public portion of the hearing. Public testimony portion of the hearing. Deliberation. Are there any further questions of staff and the commission? Are there any discussion, is there any discussion by the commission?
I would only say that that's a very congested area and I've seen, we've had experiences where job sites and circulation and management of projects has been a little shaky and other times it's been real good. And what I'm seeing down there just from a distance is real, really well-done. It's a really tight box you're working with and it's just, I always look at it as, I hope you get done sooner than later. So, thank you.
And just a reminder that ODOT has restrictions about parking on McLaughlin during the construction.
And the applicant should be reminded that this approval is only good for one year and if it needs to be renewed or extended, should probably do that about three months ahead of time.
Yes, can't wait till the last day. It won't work. If for whatever reason it gets set back, we're going to wait a few months. I don't see that happening in your particular case, but we have had cases where that has happened.
Any condition things you guys, any other conditions that you want to discuss or? I guess if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve file Z-0161-19D.
I second.
Moved by Malachi and seconded by Commissioner Pat Smith. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rowlett?
Yes. Approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The meetings usually aren't, this is a really boring time. I mean, we have boring meetings, but this has got to be the most boring one.
Top of the list. We made them tough.
So, if anybody watches this at some point.
Good night.
Thank you.
I would say the, you know, plans were well-done and it makes it easier in spite of some of the things that were light.
We got a digital set.
Good set of plans, good work by the staff helps it. That was good. Yeah. So, if you could get them all down to that, we're going to be real happy.
Yeah.
Did you do this packet?
I didn't do the packet, no. Melissa kind of just gave this to me today around noon, so it got to be kind of last minute.
Yeah. All right, commissioners, we're going to continue discussion of possible changes to the extension compliance or time limits in the Gladstone Municipal Code. So, we have in our packet some proposed changes, which really it looks pretty straightforward. There's not a whole lot there.
So, actually, that first section where the red is.
Mm-hmm.
That isn't quite what we were discussing. So, here it's talking about, okay, so let me just check. So, city administrator, Disney, can do it if there are no changes. Planning commission can if there are changes. That part is now missing.
I thought I saw that in there.
Well, that got crossed off, right?
Yeah.
So, we need to clarify that what we're really saying is that it can go, you know, it comes before the planning commission, but if there are no changes, then the city administrator or Disney.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
We beat that up, so to speak.
In terms of timing, Ms. Dance, how does this stack up with adjoining governmental agencies that regulate this? Counties, cities, like Portland, Multnomah County, Gresham?
Obviously, Clackamas.
Clackamas. What are their timelines?
I know Clackamas County land use decision is good for four years.
Four years.
I believe cities are under a two-year or a three-year typically. I know the city of Portland is a two-year timeline. I'm not sure about other, I don't know about Estacate or other cities.
I think Oregon City was two years.
Yeah.
Lining up with other communities adjoining it seems to make sense to me.
Yeah.
I think Milwaukee, if I'm correct, when I look, I might have missed it. Milwaukee doesn't have any.
Yeah.
So, I want to point out something. So, a while back, there were some, a lot of fees, fees all through the code. And we decided to change from that to having it just in one place. Specifically, we're talking about the court fees and the fee schedule. And we decided rather than having it interspersed everywhere, we'd have just one location. And I wonder if we could do a similar thing here for these land use timelines. Instead of having them in all of these different places, like four or five different sections, could we specify the timeline once and just refer to that everywhere?
It's, in code, what I've seen is it's clear if it's in the end of each code because then it's specific to each proposal.
Right, but then if you.
And so, each code has it outlined with a timeline specifically. And so, if you're looking at the C3 zone or depending on the zoning and the designation, have it defined in each one is typically where it plays. I'm not sure what the amendment is for.
So, right now, we're looking at time limit on permit, time limit on variances, time limit on adjustments, and final plot subdivisions. And we're saying that if we're wanting them all to be the same, every time we do a change, we have to make sure we find them all and change them all before they get out of sync, right?
I think that's why we have, whoever, Tammy or whoever did this, found all the places where we have. But I think from looking at some of the other code, that's pretty common to have, specifically if you're doing a adjustment on a, what is this last one?
Lot line.
Lot lines are different than something else, plat subdivisions or whatever.
Are we thinking that times would be different for each of these? Because if not, maintainability of the code would suggest that we did what we did with the fee schedule and move it into one common place. Because that's why we did it.
So, before you're saying is incorporate all of these into one?
Not necessarily incorporate them into one, but instead of specifying the time specifically, we would have them refer to the code that specifies the time.
Right.
So, are you, like, 17 dot 73 dot 040, time limits? Is that what you're saying or?
So, that, that one is a specific time limit on adjustments.
More of a date certain approach? Is that somewhat what you're saying?
I think, you know, like, we have definitions, right? We can have something that specifies what our land use timeline is, whatever we want to call it, right? Our expiration time limits, probably just define time limit somewhere, right? And then anywhere that we're doing these time limits, we refer to that code as the source of truth for what that time limit is.
And it's actually.
And if we want to change our time limit at some point, we have one code to change.
Right, and it's, we just did it, it's expiration. I mean, it was in this, yeah. So, under expiration, we would simplify things.
I think I saw something like that in Milwaukee's, but I'm not positive. Where they have one thing about time limits and kind of covered all of them.
I can also follow up and check, see if I can find anything for other cities or speak with our city attorney to clarify if that is something that can be done or it has to remain in each of the sections.
Okay.
I mean, I'm okay with us having different sections. I'm just thinking that it can refer to our schedule or whatever.
Yeah.
Because we did recently make changes in the same way in other parts of the code.
And just to clarify something, Milwaukee's going through quite a change with the development and everything, so a lot of things were suspended and changed. I'm sure that. I'm sure that, you know, after some of the dust settles, they'll probably have an updated code or dates for these things, because you don't want the lingering zombie house that was somebody's dream that sits there and goes downhill for five years. Or the project that someone thinks they're going to get it done in a year and we have economic realities, we have the snow, we had the weird weather this year that got in the way of some things I was doing. And so I always try to, you know, create a little more room. And I agree that there's no reason to reinvent this. And if we can streamline it and still meet all the requirements as far as us and the public having the information at their fingertips, and if we can streamline something, I like where Malachi is going.
Yeah, like maybe it goes to under 1780101 or whatever, right? Like that first section, right? Because that's the compliance and that's where we're talking about the expiration and the renewal.
But that's specifically for design review.
That's for design review?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I'm not sure where it'd be. Obviously that'd be under 17.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
So yes, I can try and follow up and see what I can find out.
Maybe there's a section that does other kind of schedules or something.
Check with Melissa as well and see if that makes sense or if this was the most streamlined way to get that language in there and see if there's a way to streamline it into just one section that's referenced.
So beyond that, did you want to see that all the time limits are kind of the same on these one-year ones?
Well, so currently they are. So unless we have a reason that one of them shouldn't be, I think we should try to be consistent across all of them.
You think one year is enough?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that whatever we choose.
So let's talk about if we want those one-year ones to remain one year.
That was a discussion I wanted to have. I think that something like a lot line adjustment where you've got a common owner of property and, you know, you're not, no one's really building anything at that point. You're simply saying that, hey, I've got two acres of property in Gladstone and 60% of it is on one lot and 40's on the other. And I'd like to make it 55, 45. And, you know, it doesn't even really, it's an issue that doesn't rise to a hearing. It's a blip. Without this report, none of us would probably even know what's going on. So I do think that some of those things should possibly stay at a year.
Let me ask you a question.
While I favor the big picture that we're talking about, which is moving things along.
So on the lot line adjustment, why is there language to do a year and then extend it? Like what is actually involved in the lot line adjustment?
Well, it's not that complex, but if you're changing the size of a lot or, you know, you're not creating a new lot, but you can't affect the zoning. So if I tried to take, let's say I got that 60, 40 on my property and I want to keep my house or keep a big section of the lot, all of a sudden, I create a big giant yard for myself and I've now upzoned. I can't do that. I cannot change the ability for the other lot to be used as it's zoned. Does that make sense? So if I got a piece next door, it's got room for four houses and I take a little part of that for my own, I still got to be able to put four houses in there and I need to submit a...
So meet the requirement to put the four houses in there.
Yeah, you can't change the density or how it's currently going to be used.
So you may have to go through hearings in terms of showing new designs for the other property as well?
Yeah, and you would show, you definitely show that it can be done, but it doesn't really need to be a certified thing. I mean, it has to be something that's quite, you know, detailed.
You're not doing any building or anything.
Right, right.
Just to clarify, a property line adjustment is adjusting the definition of a property.
True.
So you're adjusting the actual lines and bounds. You have it surveyed and recorded. You readjust the lines of your property and the sizes. And so in that, that needs to be recorded. And so if you do a property line adjustment, it doesn't get recorded and the property sells, then the property, there's been a kind of a binding agreement that hasn't been recorded. So then that can expire because you never know what's going to happen with property down the road. And it's usually between two property owners. The one that was in the packet that you looked at today that was done this last month was between two property owners, because there was a fence line that was five feet, that was placed in the wrong place, not on the property line. And then they built a shed that also wasn't on the property. And so to do something, they decided to do a property line adjustment to make the fence line and the lot line line up. And so one person lost property, one person gained property. If that hadn't been recorded, then when that property sells...
Did they have to actually physically move anything before that was recorded?
No, what they were doing was they had things built over the lot lines. And so they did the property line adjustment to move the kind of the recorded lot line to line up with the fence line.
Or you could never sell it without moving or fixing that.
Or removing the structure.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, in what case would it take two years to do that?
Survey, I mean, you have to pay for a survey or you have to pay for recording costs. And sometimes people, that costs money. And sometimes you pay for the land use action and the land use action is the cheapest piece of that.
It would be like tonight, we approved this guy's plan, but if he doesn't get building permits, it's the same thing. You have to record that lot line adjustment.
I have up on the screen there, property line adjustments, and I don't show any expiration dates for property line adjustments.
It's under 177340 according to our packet.
That's adjustments. So this is property line adjustments, so let me... 1773.
So it's just a different type of adjustment?
Well, it's a time limit. 177340 is a time limit on adjustment.
Good question. What kind of adjustment is this one?
The one that's listed, that's in your packet, is for adjustment 17.73. And it indicates the scope, adjustments from this may be approved where it can be shown that strict application of provisions in this title would cause an undue or unnecessary hardship and the circumstances for granting an adjustment are met. Approval of an adjustment may be granted subject to conditions that are found necessary to project the best interests of the surrounding area and otherwise achieve the purposes of this title and the regulations proposed for adjustment. Circumstances for granting, it has to do with the hardship is created by an unusual situation that is a result of a lot size, lot shape. Adjustments may be materially, I mean, it goes on there. So I guess it is different than a property line adjustment. This looks like it's more...
This looks like it's more addressing the, like adjustment to a setback or a size requirement of the zone.
I was going to say some kind of requirement.
So somewhat similar to the variance, but maybe not during a building process.
Yeah.
Thank you. And it's nice to have you be able to pull it up on the screen. Because it's, you know, sometimes we're bouncing back and forth between what's code and what's not.
So what do you think about, do you think the one-year things on what we have here tonight is okay?
I think one year on a permit is very gracious.
On the variance, on the variance, it wouldn't make any sense, because usually we're granting those at the same time that we're doing the land use permit. So if we only say one year on a variance and two years on the permit.
And a variance would likely be something that would need to be extended longer, so...
And the same with the conditional use. Those are going to go hand in hand, right?
So those, I think, so you guys think those should be two years?
I think they should all be consistent with whatever we come up with.
If you're looking to put them all in a separate section, then they should all be consistent.
Well, I'm thinking if we're going to approve some land use thing and we're saying that they have a different time limit for part of the approval and then another part of the approval, that's going to be complicated.
So we think, all of us that are here tonight, agree that those one-year things should be changed to two years, to be consistent with the two-year administrative, or the two-year approval for expiration. And along with that, we want to say that if there's no changes to the original application. So if they have a change, they still have to come before the planning commission to get an extension past the two years.
Yeah, I think if there's a change, it makes sense that they have to get it reapproved.
So, okay, so we're good with that. The part that I'm still concerned about is if they come in here at 5 o'clock on the night before it expires and think they're going to be able to get the one-year extension, because they're not.
If it's, you're talking with a change or without a change?
With a change.
With a change.
They still have to schedule for the, they have to schedule to have on the agenda for the meeting. We have to do notice.
Realistically, their original land use approval says that if there's a change, they have to get it reapproved, doesn't it?
Or a significant change, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but it says that you have, you know, this amount of time, so it'd be two years. But how are we going...
It's not two years if they make a significant change, right? If they get a significant change, they're supposed to do it before they move forward.
Prior to the two years.
No, I mean, like, if they make a significant change next month, they're supposed to come back next month.
They have to go through another review process.
Yeah. Something like what happened with the water project. Or, you know, you run into, you hit some environmental thing, but if you do run into something, then practicality says that they're probably going to run over. So typically, the bottom line and where we're going is, it's been triggered by a problem or something. So, yeah, it gets extended or dealt with in the time of the crisis, but it doesn't go back to the original situation, which is, okay, if we can get this all to, you know, in reflection, if we can get it all to two years, not complicate anything. And if it was all two years, now I'm getting a little out in the weeds, but then couldn't we 60 days beforehand notify them? Because now everybody's on the same timeframe. The number of people that are going to go over that year and fall into that two-year situation is going to be a lot smaller. And I know we can't babysit these folks. I'm not suggesting that we take in any liability there. But sometimes if you send them a reminder, like my friendly cable company used to do, if it's doable and it's two years down the road, I think we're doing some goodwill and maybe putting an end to the situation where they come in here and for whatever reason they're unhappy, even though oftentimes it's their lack of immediate requirement. It doesn't reflect on us, but if there's a way to avoid it.
I've been saying for a while, I think we should be notifying people before committee's...
And I don't think there's a way to do that.
Does it make any sense, like this gentleman that was here tonight who got his application approved, to give him a one-page handout that said, here's the rules to go along with this. If you're going to need an extension, you have to file it within three months of its expiration or we cannot renew it. And we've told them, we've given them the tools, put in their toolbox to make, so they know what they have to do if they run into a speed bump. County doesn't have to notify them, they don't have to do anything. But I think, I think by not saying anything ever and not taking responsibility for it, I don't think we're doing our job.
Well, I think that given the notification thing, that is a problem not just for land use.
That is a city problem.
And there's a difference between a land use app...
It's not a city to tell you, they've got their permits, it's up to the builder to do that. I mean, the county, in order to do that, they have to have a database that runs that's going to poop out all these, you know, about to expire things. It's a whole...
Technically, we already have that.
I, you know, or somebody to do it. You're talking about changing the jobs of a bunch of people to do this.
Just to clarify, in the standard conditions of the decision that they receive, that they've applied for, paid for, reviewed, that's then brought to the planning commission, there is, the first standard condition is the expiration.
How to handle it for them?
It'll expire within a year and then it says that you can apply for an extension. So that is in the conditions of approval.
And I think the rules for applying for the extension should be included, so there's no surprises.
Yeah. If you need to apply 90 days before or something.
This should be done within 90 days of the action.
Needs to be completed by the expiration date or something like that.
I think that we need to make that clear. I agree, but I don't agree that, you know, we should put it on the city or the county to do notifications of expiring permits.
Nor do I. I agree with you.
And as, back to, I think if we go to two years and they have a better understanding, then if, that they don't come into compliance or it expires, it's unfortunate, but it's, we're not likely to be explaining ourselves and not needing to. And I don't feel we need to. I'm not trying to take ownership of other people's shortcomings, but you've managed projects before and sometimes it's, it can get pretty crazy and you walk right by something. So I'm just trying to, without assuming any liability or complicate things, communicate better out there with our customers.
I've been promoting that idea for a couple of years now, because I was talking to Jeff about the fact that in Beaverton, when your alarm permit expires or is about to expire, they notify you, right? But in Gladstone, we don't. So most people with alarm permits are not renewing because they don't realize their alarm permits are expired.
So do we, do we issue alarm permits or does the county?
No, the city, are you talking about...
We started about...
Home fire alarms?
About four, five years ago.
Home fire alarms. We also do for commercial, so we do.
But we don't notify people that the permits are expiring.
I'm not sure what their process is in the police department.
Yeah, I talked to Jeff about it when I noticed it.
Yeah, I can follow up and ask for sure.
But you're right about that, because the county, I worked with the people at the alarm permits at Okinoma County. And they're, now their new application that they bought does the notifications. But before, they did, you know, they had to have somebody go through the book and figure out which ones were expiring and whatnot.
It may not be an overnight change, but it is something that we could do and that we could automate. You know, we could have our land use permits in our GIS, for example, where it would automatically spit out the notifications.
Except, we contract with Clarkamas County. It's not a function that the city does. Why Tammy doesn't sit there as part of her job to do that. So we contract with Clarkamas County to provide this portion of the work to the city instead of having the city planner on staff. And even then, I don't know that anybody does that. I don't think Okinoma County or the city of Portland is going to contact everybody that's got a building permit to let them know that it's going to expire.
Well, I would just kind of conclude by saying, I think that with the two-year limit, I think we're going to eliminate a lot of the problem. And if we can be a little more clear, definitely more clear on the language that simply says, here's your drop dead date, you know, a year, a year and nine months down the road, you know, and it's right there in front of them, then I think, I think we got it covered. And thanks for letting me get off in the weeds.
And that's true, because that's what those people were mad about, those two permits. Those people were mad because they didn't have time to get the extension, correct?
They didn't have time to get it on our calendar.
Yeah. And I thought back to, I've done a lot of contracting and things and you've owned houses and sometimes it's the weather, I mentioned it earlier. And you think, okay, we'll get this done, right? And then, then, you know, it's winter and you don't touch the project for three or four months. And that's when it expires because you're not doing anything. And then you come in here and of course you say, oops. So again, I think we're making the right move and I don't think, I don't think we need to do any more than tighten up the language.
Yeah, I'll check with Melissa about kind of putting more, I mean, it says grants an extension prior to expiration of approval. The language is, you know, a sentence and it's very clear, but it could be...
So to clarify that, so what they're talking about is that, so let's say it expires in June 2020, right? So they come in in May 2020, so this is before expiration. I'd like to get it renewed. Well, the next planning commission meeting is the third week of June, you don't have time. Right? So that's where part of the problem is coming in.
So put in like a timeline, shall be applied for three months.
This is what you should do it if you want to get it approved.
But we're proposing that it could be, if there's no changes, city administrator or designee could...
It doesn't need to come to the commission is what you're proposing. Is it the city administrator or designee?
What we proposed was to have, allow administrative decision. If, you know, if Dick Hanna comes back with this at the 11th month and then whoever, the city manager or their designee, I think is what we have in the code or proposed to, would be able to do that, so...
And maybe we should keep the timeframe the same either way, even though that one would be faster, just to simplify the process for them. So when you're explaining to them when they should apply for it, it should be the same. no matter what.
We can't adopt, we can't put language in a decision if it isn't supported by the code. So we can't make a, a personal recommendation to somebody and write it into a decision.
No, but we're talking about once you make this change, right?
Right, so that change would have to include language that says shall be notified-
Right.
Or that language would have to be in the code change. We couldn't just, I, as a staff member administering the code, I couldn't just write that in there as a recommendation. I could have that conversation with an applicant, I typically do, but it can't be written in the decision. And I'll check in with Melissa about this more because I'm not sure really the, the ins and outs of the ability to make recommendations, but you have to do them based in what the code says. And if you're looking at amending the code, to say something that would be able to give language that would say, we say shall be granted prior to the expiration, and you don't know if somebody might, if you make an application, it doesn't mean it's gonna be complete if you're applying for an extension.
Well, we're not saying it will be granted either.
Right.
But no, I think what we're saying is that maybe we should add to this something that, um, adds our ability to, um, include that information in, in their application acceptance.
Upfront.
Right.
Yeah.
Does counsel, counsel ultimately weigh in on this particular decision?
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to try to come up with something, then submit it to city council and say, we recommend that the code be changed to do this.
Just wanna make sure everybody knew that.
And then city council will discuss it for another couple of months.
Yeah. Toronto seventeen generally, they like to-
Well, and anything that you put together, obviously, is gonna be in front of the council, so I think we're real clear here.
So for the next meeting, are you wanting to have these proposed changes included in here after I follow up with the city attorney regarding, um, if we can put all of the time limits into one section as well as include a rules for extension, like a request for extension needs to be completed ninety days prior to expiration date, something like that?
It's not that it needs to be completed by them, but I think what we're gonna say is we're going to include in their, um, acceptance, right?
Okay.
Um, that, that's when they should do it, right?
City must be notified ninety days prior.
Because that's gonna give either their team or our team ninety days to go through that process, right?
Right.
Um, I don't know what the wording is supposed to be for that, but it, they, they only have to have it approved by, for the, that is over, but, um-
So you're just suggesting that they start that process ninety days prior to?
Right, right.
But would they need the ninety days if, if we change this process? I think there's a safety net in there.
Right.
That's the whole idea.
It would probably be faster if, if they have no changes, but rather than give them two different dates, maybe keep it the same and helps relieve the burden on administration.
And the administrative decisions still have a fifteen day comment and appeal period at the back end of them, so they're not filed until that comment and appeal period closes.
Okay. Ms. Bannock, if I could ask you a question. Uh, these mentions about the city administrator or their designee making recommendations, is that something that the city staff is comfortable with or are we reading, writing something in that they may not wanna do?
I can follow up with our city administrator to confirm that. These are, we're still at this discussion stage, um, so I can certainly follow up with her, uh, our city administrator, obviously, before we make any recommendations to the council to verify that this-
Thank you.
Yes.
That was part of the whole city administrator, city manager discussion like two years ago.
And that city manager administrator can appoint, say that all that stuff has to go through the planner's, she won't, she or he won't, right? And I think that that, I think that our current administrator would be good with that, but we should check.
Yes, can do that.
And just clarify, we are separating that so that the planning commission is still gonna be seeing if there are changes.
Correct. Yes, we'll add that language, yes, for your discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. And then, um, I forgot, what are the other things that we're supposed to be working on? I can't remember.
What they had. The housing unit, but that'll be Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, um, so Thursday, I think what we're going to do is to kinda go over what's happened, so, are we done with this discussion?
So next time, we'll have a new version to review?
Correct.
Okay.
So the, you know, we had several meetings on the proposed code changes and initially I thought we were gonna go through and say, you know, like we're doing tonight, update this, this code, municipal code dot whatever, but that's really not what it turned into or is. What it was is a discussion about, you know, simplifying some code, like administrative decisions as opposed to having to go to the planning commission for everything. You'll find out about it, but I just wanna give you a heads up to think about it before you get the presentation. And there was some input from the public, which you'll hear about, um, and so forth. So it, it's a good thing for us to get together with city council and, you know, get, get put on the same page by the, um, people that did this audit or whatever. So, um, any more business from the commission?
I did send a message to Tammy, uh, regarding TRIMET. I haven't heard back yet, so I'll try and follow up there and see.
Yeah, what I was hoping is to get them, somebody down to, in front of the commission, you know, and we'll give them time to talk. But, you know, the other day, in my mind, I'm thinking, that's not that far to walk, but if you really go do it, you know, for some people, that's an impossibility to be able to walk that far. And really, it is. I mean, I've got friends that are about my agents, they, you know, vary of, can't walk ten feet and some of them can't wa, you know, some are-
Hip replacements, knee replacements, all that stuff.
Yeah, or whatever, and it's like, man, you know, I'm fortunate because, you know, I can hike a couple of miles, it's not gonna kill me or anything, but some people, that's an impossibility to get that far. They'd have to call a cab, seriously. I know it's hard to believe, and I just, I can't believe that TRIMET couldn't figure something out, so, you know, we wanna get more students at the school, at the high school in particular, if there was a bus that would drop the kids off in front, 'cause I don't know how close any of you are to teenagers, but they're another breed of people that it's hard, it's hard to believe.
Isn't that the truth?
I mean, if they, if you have to walk from the bus stop over here on Abernathy or the Thriftway or whatever you wanna call it, down to the city hall, they won't do it. And some will run all the way around the city to go do it. You know, it's such a vary, it varies so much, but honestly, I think that the people that are gonna use the services at the city hall, we really need to accommodate the people that, that are disabled or just can't do that walk. And I think it's just ridiculous to think that, that some adjustment couldn't be made. And that would serve both the high school and the civic center.
I thi, I think part of TRIMET's, I went and drove it, and I think part of their, their reasoning is that, you know, obviously, I agree with everything you're saying, but they're probably looking at it, where Gladstone suddenly runs into Jennings Lodge, you know, you leave Gladstone and there you are on Hole Street or you're down by Candy Lane School or something, so I think that, a lot of their buses, correct me if I'm wrong, go up to Oatfield or, I mean, go up, up Webster or something, so there might be a way, but I think it might be the logistics of the way it is now. But you build the city hall and, um, there's gotta be a way to make it happen.
So is Glen Echo, Glen Echo's a collector, right?
Yeah.
I mean, even, I, you know, I wouldn't, what they'd have to do is go down to Glen Echo and turn left or right to Oatfield, but I, you know, the roads are really small, Glen Echo's not very wide. And I can certainly see where, you know, especially the people going, um, east on Glen Echo from Portland Avenue where they would complain about-
Yeah.
-'cause that road is not wide. And then going, um, the other way, there's a bus stop right on the corner of Abernathy and Glen Echo right there, um-
Right.
And another one on the highway. So there's like a couple of them right there, but I was thinking if they could just go to the civic center and stop and then go through the Gladstone High School turnaround there-
That's what I was thinking.
And just come back and hit Abernathy.
Or come around the new road that they're building and back out.
Yeah, there, seems like there'd be a way to accommodate that and, uh, that would serve the public.
When, when they were talking about putting a library up there, I, um, I know some folks at TRIMET from my wonderful light rail experience, and, um, the problem at Glen Echo is when a bus is sitting there waiting to pull out, it's, so the solution, and this of course has been years ago, was something that may ultimately really help, and that is having an actual freeway stop or, you know, I don't wanna get into it, but something other than just a flashing light. And I, I have no problem getting out of there, but I know the area, I've got a Honda Accord, but it, you'd be surprised how bad it's getting right there, trying to pull off Glen Echo. And I think if we could do a little fix there or something and we got TRIMET servicing that, it would be great. Yeah, 'cause I, you know, if there's a way to make it work without TRIMET taking on liability, it'd be awesome.
I know Gladstone's not the huge, Metropolis, you know, that, but it seems like a pretty minor thing to me and I, at least to get them over here to explain, you know, why they can't get ten more minutes on their schedule or whatever to do that, you know?
Yeah.
Anyway.
And we're growing. They don't know, they don't really probably realize, every place is growing, obviously, but you look, we're, we're seeing a lot, a lot of changes. I drove through town and, uh, photographed everything out of construction I could find last weekend and it's-
Really?
It's, yeah, I'm gonna present, present it to everybody and it, yeah, I, I went, wow, you know? I keep saying Mayberry's changing and, you know, even though I know it's changing and I'm on the planning commission and I've been around this my whole life, I'm going, oh wow, look at that, you know? And so, yeah, we, we certainly are more deserving of more services as the population grows. You can tell the county that, too.
Oh, and just to follow up, I, um, I reached out to Melissa to find out about the time extension and she said that, um, the other sections of the code aren't on the IGA and so you might wanna bring that up with Jackie, um, for the other sections of the code to, to change the time limit from one year to two year in this other section.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, that's, you know, it's concerning that we do need to do this work and, you know, we're constrained with spanning, there's just too much stuff going on, really, at this time. I think that's what you're going to see on this code audit, too, is that probably, I'm not gonna say anything else, everybody needs to make their own conclusions. Anyway, anybody else wanna, um, discuss? Business, comments? Somebody's ready to make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
House pool?
I second.
Commissioner Langston, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, we're adjourned.